I have a little presentation for us.
Yes, I know. But it's okay, nobody will notice it being.
Good evening and welcome to the February 4th, 2016 Planning Commission Meeting for the City of West Sacramento. Per tradition, we always begin each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And this evening, I'm going to ask our prior Commissioner JP Singh to lead us. Thank you. Just as a reminder, if anyone would like to address the Commission this evening, except for applicants, there is a little slip of paper over on the side credenza, if you could fill that out and give it to Katie, sitting over here. Prior to the end of the staff report, Katie will hand the slips of paper to the Chair, who will not be me, to call you up to address the Commission. So, I shouldn't be smiling too much on that, so. The reason for this, and prior to getting into the regular agenda this evening, we have a bit of administrative work to do. And given that this is our first Commission meeting for 2016, we need to elect new officers. So, first item on the agenda is election of Planning Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary for 2016.
Mr. Chairman.
You're not going to wait to get rid of me at all.
Not that I'm in a hurry for you to move elsewhere in at least one time. I'd like to nominate Martha as our new Chairman, Chairperson.
Second. Prior to taking a vote on Martha, is there any additional discussion or nominations? Okay, with that, I would like to call a vote for Martha to be our new Planning Commission Chair. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? That makes Martha our new Chair, you knows, and I hereby get to move.
Kitty. Thank you for your nomination. I really appreciate your support in electing me as Chair. And I think we have our next item on the agenda. We need a nomination for a Vice Chair and a Secretary. And I would like to ask for a little guidance from David on our process.
Sure. This is a vote, although it's a somewhat more informal vote than the way we do on projects. But what we would recommend, that you take nominations in a second, and presume that whoever is nominated would accept that nomination. And in the event there are more than one person is nominated, I'd recommend voting on the first one nominated. And depending on how that vote goes, if that vote is an affirmative, then that person would become Vice Chair, and presumably the vote on the second person would not be necessary at that time. If the first person does not receive an affirmative vote, then we would proceed to the vote on the second person. And then if that person presumably would receive an affirmative vote, then that person would ascend to Vice Chair. So, at this time, you could open up nominations and see what we get.
Okay, at this point, I'll open it up to nominations for the Vice Chair position.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Ms. Bernadette Austin for Vice Chair.
Okay. And a second? Andrew? So, we have a first and a second. And are there any additional nominations for Vice Chair?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate Andrew as our Vice Chair.
Okay. So, we have two nominations. And at this time, we'll take a vote for the first nomination.
You haven't had a second yet.
Oh, we have, need a second for that second nomination. We do not have a second at this point? Okay. Then we only have one nomination at this point. Okay. All right. Then I would like to take a vote on the appointment, or the vote for the nomination for Bernadette. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes at this point? Any abstentions? All right. Then Bernadette, you are now our Vice Chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners. And are we?
Is he going to move again?
Yes. I'm sorry, yes, I have to move again.
How do we ask the name?
Oh, okay.
I never thought of it that way, huh?
Did you leave anything? No, my stuff is right over there. Oh, lolly.
Madam Chair, in recognition of Mr. Tilly's diligent service to the Planning Commission, I would like to renominate Mr. David Tilly for Secretary.
Second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Mr. Tilly will be their Secretary.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda, our presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the Commission. At this time, I do not have any requests to speak for items that are not on the agenda. And we move to the next item on the agenda, which is correspondence and staff communication from the Planning Commission Secretary.
Yes, just one item tonight. On behalf of the staff, we'd like to thank Commissioner Leibig for his service as being Chair, especially as we had many new Commissioners come on the Planning Commission in the last 18 months or so. I believe they did a very good job helping the Commission along, the new Commissioners along, as well as keeping our overall, our meetings running well. So, thank you, Commissioner Leibig.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leibig, you did a great job, and you were definitely a great role model for me now. I hope to be able to follow well in your footsteps there. And next item is disclosure vex party communications. And Planning Commissioners should disclose any communications they have had on the agenda items at this time. And yes, go ahead. Move me to my left.
Madam Chair, thank you. I've had conversations with the applicant or community member regarding number two on the agenda.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I've also had communication with a community member of this application on number two.
Any other vex party communications? And I've had a discussion on item number three with a resident or a owner of a residence close to item number three prior to this meeting. And that is my vex party communication. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, and we will consider and approve the minutes from the December 17th Commission meeting. I move to approve minutes.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
No discussion? All right. Both have it? Any abstentions? One abstention?
Two.
Two, okay. You have two abstentions. Madam Secretary, did you pick that up? The two abstentions, okay, great, thank you. And on the regular agenda, we have item number two, Public Hearing Regarding Southport Deli Mart Conditional Use Permit. And Ms. Allen will be providing a presentation on that. And we'll see if, I don't have any requests to speak from the public on that particular item, so at this point, I just have, we will receive a presentation from Ms. Allen on that.
Chair Guerrero, prior to Ms. Allen starting her presentation, I'd just like to provide some, a couple of introductory remarks on this particular project. Staff did receive some late information on this project that came out after your staff reports were prepared and published. And so, that's information we're still evaluating. So, tonight, we are, would still like to do this item officially as a public hearing, but we'd, staff would likely be seeking, requesting a continuance after we hear any discussion about the project from the Commission and any members of the public that are here and wish to speak during the public hearing portion. Of course, it's entirely up to the Commission in the end, you know, how you wish to proceed. But I wanted to sort of preface this item with that information, and then we'll proceed with Ms. Allen giving a more formal staff report about the project.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Members of the Commission. The proposed CP is for the sale of hard liquor at the Southport Deli Mart, which is located in Southport on Jefferson Boulevard. This particular business has been in business since 1986, so it predates the city's incorporation. Staff did mail notices to residents within a 500-foot radius and received no concerns or comments on the project. After, as David mentioned, after the staff report was prepared, we did receive additional information from another city department, which caused us to think we may need to reexamine the findings as they are presented in your staff report. Because of that, at this time, our preferred option, as David said, would be to open the public hearing, take comments from the Commission, and then return to you with a completely revised staff report and present that to you on the 18th. So, that concludes my presentation. If you have questions for me or David, we're happy to answer them. Also, the applicant's representative is in the audience, and if you have any questions for him, he would be happy to speak to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, we have, I am just going to look into this a little further. We have a recommendation to postpone this public hearing for the next meeting, given that we have additional information, or we can talk about it, the information that we have today, and maybe take into consideration the information we have today.
Yes, we would actually recommend that you open the public hearing and continue it to the next meeting.
And continue it then, okay. All right then.
But if there's any feedback on the project that the Commission has at this time, I think it would be benefit staff and the applicant to hear that, so we can be better prepared for when we do return.
Okay, that's a good idea, I agree. And at this point, then, we'll open the public hearing. And if there is any information now that we can receive to take a look at this, and then we'll have Commissioners, you know, provide their feedback and see, you know, what their thoughts are, so that we can provide feedback for the staff. Okay? All right.
You probably need to call on the applicant.
Call on the applicant at this point?
For the representative, to see if they have a comment before we talk.
Okay. Thank you. And if you can please provide your name and...
My name is JP Singh, I'm representing the applicant. And like Russ said, it's kind of different to be on the other side of the aisle. Anyway, so I talked to the staff, and due to some changes in that, I requested for a continuation too, but since their request of being here, I would like to hear your concerns and better get prepared for the next time, and on the continuation of the next meeting.
Okay.
Are you agreeing that it's okay to postpone the item then, JP?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right then. All right. I'll begin to my left for comments from Commissioners. Are you, have you concluded your presentation then, at this point?
No, I'm here to hear what the concerns are, or anything that I can...
Do you have any questions or anything from the Commissioners? Okay.
Well, I'll start, if you're standing there, I have questions for the applicant.
Sure.
So, I'll just go, I'll just go ahead and start. Welcome back, Mr. Singh. Couple of questions, it's just not popping out to me. Why was there a change with the police recommendation? Do you understand that? Maybe staff or you can help fill us in.
Yeah, I don't know that Mr. Singh was in communication with the police on that particular matter. This was something that came to us at staff level. Yeah. We would certainly need some additional information and input from the police on this particular project overall, before we can prepare a better analysis, you know, and for you of the required findings.
Will the police be, will a police representative be present to answer questions?
We can make that request, that one of their, one of their lieutenants. And then, we were, had one line to be here this evening, and since we did anticipate a potential continuance, we did not have that particular officer attend tonight, but we certainly can request that we have one at our next meeting.
Okay. Or maybe collect comments or questions from the Commission that possibly get answered. My biggest concern would be the number and density of stores that sell alcohol, hard alcohol, in that area. And so, I would like to hear just a little bit more about that, and what the Police Department has to say about that.
There's a, I don't know, I don't know how you consider the density or the too many stores in the particular area, but it's about a half mile away. The main thing is, the store is in existence, like staff said, pre-existent of the city. And due to the more rooftops on the, on the south of the city, there is a more demand or more traffic that goes through the stores. Close one is Tower Mart, and then the other one is the Southport Deli. By default, their definition is convenience store, so they get the customers who want to have a convenient, convenience of going in and out pretty quick. Being a convenience store, and compared to the other store, their prices are probably be higher, but only their living is based on providing service and cleanliness and talking to the customer, and that reflects into the letters that send out to the community, nobody objected to it. And the store is part of the team, the new initiative the police have started, that they, the store owner communicate with the police and try to make sure the stores are clean, and they don't serve the liquor to the underage. And in fact, we have few times, police sent a decoy to have underage customer going in, and they didn't serve the liquor, and they have a letter saying that you successfully completed the decoy thing. And so, my thing is, they just want to, it's a small convenience store with a small mom-and-pop type thing, we need to encourage that to keep it, stay safe. And they already have beer and wine, so it's just the expansion of adding a liquor to it. The main thing is, if they don't have it, being more customer coming in, and that's the thing they requested to add to it, the existing, the license they have, so they can have, don't lose the business. Because when the customer goes out, then he, they're deprived of the honor to sell the product, they will buy otherwise. And the whole thing goes to that. And so, that's what it is. So, it's just to keep small business in the community and in the, in making the living, that's what it needed to be.
Okay. Final question. And I apologize, I haven't actually been in there. Is it actually a deli, or is it more of a convenience store?
It's a convenience store. They are, they are, they sell sometimes the delis, the sandwiches, they have some pre-made and some they made on the floor. So, it's a combination of both.
Okay, thank you.
But you're most welcome, I'll give you the tour.
All right. Commissioner Kelcher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if this is a question for the applicant or for staff. I think it's actually for staff, now that I think about it. Would you like me to hold that until the public hearing is concluded, or you want me to ask it now?
At this time, I think if, is it something that the applicant can answer as well while we have a public hearing open?
It's about the ordinance.
Oh, it's about the ordinance. Why don't we hold off on that for now, and then we'll answer it?
Okay.
Present the question. Any other questions you have? No?
No.
I live just off of Marshall over there, so I drive by the store, and my husband actually goes in. My question is, so there's a new sports bar, I mean, what is really pretty much next door. And I'm not sure, I mean, this question can be both directed to the applicant as well as staff. But do you have any trickle-over business, like people leave the bar and then come over to the store? I'm only concerned about having drunk people walking around Jefferson, and now if they can access hard liquor, maybe they will. I don't know, I'm not sure if this is already...
No, I think it's a, if that's the issue, then it would have been already in the eyes of the police, the drunk people leaving bar and wandering around. But as far as the license thing is concerned, that's a totally two different things. They serve the liquor, and they don't sell the liquor to take out.
Well, I understand that, but my question to you is still the same.
It's a stipulation, you know.
And is this something that, I'm not sure if you know about this, or maybe the workers of the store know better, but I'm just wondering if there's already been a lot of people, kind of, you know, some trickle over as it is.
No, I don't think so, because if the people come from the bar, they need to go home, rather than if they need to buy the liquor and drink it, they probably do it in the bar, or they go buy it in the first place, rather than going to the bar. And that's, again, the stipulation, you know, how you perceive the things. To my point is, I think that that's not the case. We don't see the drunk people coming over to buy the liquor after they come out. I'm sure they probably get into argument, because the guy is drunk, and they probably refuse to serve him the drink, and then we will have a police issue in that case, which is not the, actually is happening.
Okay. Two questions. Commissioner Moore?
From the far left to the far right. I like that. Actually, I only have a couple of questions, you know, and I'm not going to ask JP anything directly, because he'll talk for the rest of the night and so on. But no, and, you know, one of the questions I had was the police report in there, and it said they had three calls in that area. That area being the store, or that area being the area around it? And I think, you know, you don't have to answer it tonight, but you know, that would be the type of question that I'd want to ask the Police Department. And I guess the other question I have for the store itself is, it would be kind of nice to see a design of how the store was going to be laid out, because a convenience store, the way I relate to it, brings a lot of kids into the store. So, therefore, how do we keep the kids away from the alcohol, and what the plan is there? Not that it has to be anything detailed, but we kind of did the same type of thing, David, with that store over by Streets of London, and they kind of gave us a little idea of how they were laying it out. So, kids could come in and buy some chips or a candy bar, but they wouldn't be right up with the alcohol.
Yeah, I think a floor plan would be helpful.
Yeah. So, and the other question I would have for them would be something maybe more for staff in dealing with the C3 zoning, of how that applies. I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Stromphaus?
I think I share most of the open questions and comments by my fellow Commissioners. I think the one question I would look for additional guidance from staff on, in addition to what I've heard, is this question of intensity. And I recognize that the application for the conditional use permit is what we're deeming as a more intense use, which is guiding a lot of this conversation. But I would also ask, are there other activities, maybe or non, that wouldn't require a use permit, that would also be a more intense use? I could see, from a land use perspective, this property becoming more intense in its use if someone won the lottery there. And then more folks were buying lottery tickets there, because it was a lucky store. And so, and maybe that sounds off, but...
I know, I know.
My, I guess my point is, you know, the key argument that stuck out from me in the staff report, in its original recommendation, was this idea of, you know, this property being there before the incorporation of the city, and now as a result, we've made a policy that any additional intensity would not be permitted. But I don't really have a really clear understanding of what additional intensity is. And if we're just relying on the application of the conditional use permit as additional intensity, that's fine, but it was never really made clear to me in the staff report, so I'd like that additional clarification.
Commissioner?
So, first of all, thank you and the applicant. I mean, for, to be in business for 30 years is, it's really commendable. And I also recognize that the sales tax, that there'll be sales tax revenue generated from additional products being available. My question is for staff. For me, it's not so much a question of whether to approve or not approve a conditional use permit. As we all know, the area that is noticed is a finite radius, okay? So, presumably, your customers, as well as people who would be concerned, would live outside of that notice radius. And so, I would be interested in hearing from staff in a future staff report, if we choose to continue this, about if there are any precedents for a period, a period of time, so a conditional use permit for a three-year period, or a one-year period. I imagine that if there's already being, if there are already alcohol sales on the premises, this may not add to an intensity of usage. I'd need to, you know, look a little bit more at the findings of that, but I'd like to hear back a little bit about if we have that precedent set in other places in the city. But again, thank you very much for being, you know, contributing members of our city for three decades.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think I also share a lot of the points that my fellow Commissioners have shared. And I think that I also appreciate the work that you've done to earn that letter, to successfully complete the decoy operation. And, because I know that that's important for those that are young kids, you know, who do try to make any attempt, and, you know, that you've demonstrated that you will, you know, overcome that, that's really really important. And in looking at some of the findings, you know, to address some of the concerns raised by, initially raised by the Police Department, on the proximity of what are the other stores that sell hard liquor? And, you know, you did answer that question a little bit, but I still would like to have, you know, more insight, because if there is, you know, access, real access issues, if it's just a half mile, I don't perceive that as a real access issue. But if you have any other information for me to understand, you know, what is it that they wanted to find in your store? What is it that your store sells that they can't find in the other stores? And it's much easier for them to go to your store for everything they need, and as opposed to going to another store, is it just much more expensive? Just something a little more than just access. So, that way, it helps me to feel like, okay, if you have their business, and you want to earn more of their business, and you want to be a good competitor, that gives me a better understanding of what you're trying to accomplish in that area. And just wanted to say, if there's any other, any other comments you wanted to provide a response to at this time, before I close the public hearing.
Oh, I, thanks for, thanks for listening, and I would like to, like you suggested, get some more points and try to be more in detail. And also, to Mr. Charlie's point, to see how the layout would be to easy accessible for the kids, and less restrictive for them to access the liquor and stuff. The only thing, again, I just want to say, it already have a beer and wine for 30 years, and there is no complaints from the neighbors, or from the police in matter of having a disturbance or police calls for that. And the recommendation from police for doing the good work and part of the team initiative that police did, Wesack Police did a few months ago, is just trying to make a, make a living by the small business, and try to add, not expanding into it, it's already have, if you go to ABC to have a beer, wine, and liquor license, it's only one license. You don't go... You don't go to two stages. And this is just the add-on, adding supplement in the liquor we already have with a less intensity. Less intensity means less alcohol percentage in the beer and wine and liquor is more. But in quote-unquote "technically," we already have a liquor license, you know, of less alcohol volume by nature. And I'll see you next time.
Okay, one minute. We do have one more question here, sorry.
Okay, I had a comment and a question. So I drive by the store every time I go anywhere because it is right on my route into town. And to be honest, it's the closest thing to us. It's the closest business to us. And every day, I observe there are many cars in and out of that parking lot, all day. And so there are countless regular customers there. I've always just gone to Tower Mart because I always have to get gas. But I'm not the one who goes to the store. So my husband has frequented this store. So there are, it's definitely, this business is a pillar in our community. It is a very important business that has a strong following. And then actually, true story, just last week, my husband went to Tower Mart and there was nothing on sale. So he went to your store expecting to buy something. And then he told me that you guys don't have a liquor license. So this actually did happen. There is this real demand. And my husband was part of this. I thought I should share this story. This really did happen. So there's that. I did have a question, though, not just some random commentary. I'm wondering what time, what time does the store currently close? And if that's going to be changing with this application?
I'll come back on that next hearing, that what the plan is. I think it closes 10 o'clock. But, yeah, to supplement your comment, we are really worried that if we don't have it and customer wants it and they knew with the posting with the ABC, you know, we're going to have it, we want to retain the customers. We don't want to lose it. And that will definitely impact us financially because customers will go and we will lose the business that, other than liquor, that they will buy from us. And by default, like I said, it's a convenient of coming in and out of Jefferson that people, they say, hey, we have everything, why don't you have this? And now it's more pressure for us because of the ABC 30-day notice. And everybody knows, oh, yeah, no, we want it. And I like to make sure we do our part, in your eyes, to make sure we are part of the community and we blend in and also address your concerns and take a guidance or cue from what you want and make sure we implement that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. That closes the public hearing. And we will now take questions that we have for staff. And Mr. Kelcher, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, I do. So what I would appreciate a little bit of clarification on is the question of intensity, as Commissioner Sturmfelds also raised. If... If an increase in intensity is already explicitly not allowed by ordinance, would we have to be finding that a change in the applicant's license status does not constitute an increase in intensity in order to approve the application?
Yes. This matter before you would need to be found to be not treated, not to be an intensification of a non-conforming use, to be able to move it forward.
But the version of the staff report that we have now seems to be rather explicit when it says that adding additional product types for sale is considered an intensification of use and would not be permitted under this section of the ordinance. Is that explicit in the ordinance? Or is that staff's interpretation at this time?
Yeah.
I think that that's amongst the information that staff is preparing to bring before you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions at this point in time? Commissioner Tilly, I mean, Secretary Tilly, what was your...
Oh, we would, this time, recommend the commission vote to continue this to February 18th.
Okay. I'll accept...
Madam Chair. Oops. Oh, I was just going to say, given the new information that was provided this evening and the information that appears to be yet to come, I move that we can continue this public hearing to February 18th.
Second? All right. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And we will move toward next item on the agenda.
Before we move to the next item...
Yes. Yes, we do.
Because I looked at my map, and Tilly, you're right, I'm about 498...
498 feet away from this thing because I hit the very edge of the corner. And my one comment to you is, normally, if something's that close, I would get notified. And we did not get any notification. I even checked with Barbara and nothing came on that. So we didn't get notified on this. And with that, I would like to take just one moment to thank Russ for the great job he did as our chairman for the past year. He did a fine job. And welcome Martha as our new chairman and Bernadette as our vice chairman. It should be a great year again, and I look forward to it. And since you don't care, I'm going home.
Before Commissioner Moore leaves, I just want to point out that he recently received, last month, he received the Mike McGowan Lifetime Achievement Award from the Chamber of Commerce. It was a very big deal. And I had an opportunity to meet his grandson, who I think, and granddaughter, I think I have a question, his grandson. Because he was so sweet and so polite. And I'm sure he gets it from his grandfather. So congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good evening again. This item is a public workshop on the Alora at Washington Square Project. This project, in its first iteration, was originally improved in 2006. And at that time, it contained 25 single-family lots and two multifamily lots. The applicants at that time, in 2007, decided to modify the project by adding the lot that was available to the east, which added an additional 41 units to the project site, bringing the total number of single-family units up to 70. At that time, the project also contained a 3,500-square-foot community building. Maps normally expire after 36 months if they have not achieved final map status. However, due to the economic downturn that we've gone through, the legislature, starting in 2008, approved a series of map time extensions. And because of that, the map for this project does not expire until November 15th of next year. So the applicant has chosen to make a couple minor modifications to the map that was approved in 2007. Basically, what they're doing is they're removing two lots and they're removing the community building. The remover, the removal of the two lots will remove the requirement that they process a density bonus because now they're under the maximum density for the lot size. The applicant has had prepared several studies on the project that analyzed certain features. They prepared an arborist report, which showed that there are numerous trees on the site, 12 of which are heritage-sized trees. However, the trees on the site, all of them either constitute the weedy trees, the trees of heaven, or the remainder trees are all in very poor condition. The arborist has concluded that the 12 heritage trees are all either in poor or very poor condition. And because of that, their recommendation would be that all the heritage trees be removed because they are a danger. The city's urban forest manager has reviewed the arborist report and concurs with it, although she did point out that they would still need to obtain tree removal permits. However, they would not have to pay the bonus heritage fees because of the fact that the trees are in poor condition. The project borders on the northern side of the UP railroad tracks. Because of that, noise has been a concern in that area. A noise assessment was prepared for the project back in 2014. For in, for the two blocks that are adjacent to the northern edge there, the two blocks of houses, to obtain the interior decibel levels of 45, there will have to be some mitigation measures prepared in terms of the specific doors and windows that will have to be on those particular sides facing the railroad tracks. That is something that we will address further at the public hearing. There were mitigation measures on that the first time it was presented. And we anticipate that we will have similar measures to mitigate for that this time around. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is in attendance and has a short presentation to present for you. I'm happy to answer any questions for you at this time.
Okay. Just like to ask the commissioners, would you like to ask any questions now? Or would you like to wait until the presentation by the applicant? Wait? Okay, we'll wait for the presentation now by the applicant. And if you can give your name?
Hi, my name is Serena Trockta. I'm with Full Circle Architecture, the architect for the project. Thank you for having us this evening. We're very excited to be back before you and have the project come back to life. I just want to, I know that a lot of the commissioners are new to what, you wouldn't have seen the presentation a number of years ago. And so I want to just kind of go through it with you, talk about some of the goals that we had for the design, as well as some of the changes that we make and how we feel that it's an even better project today. So if you don't mind going to the next slide, please. So this is the site plan. And the basic concept of the project is to create a walking street, a more village feel. So we have taken great care in putting the front doors and the garage entrances together, in most cases, to be able to create a walking street through the development. And there are certain areas where you can see that there are some sidewalks that come in basically as the project relates to the public street. So we have a bit of a sidewalk on Sixth, then a bit of a sidewalk there on E Street. But as you come in, you can see we've done a lot of work to give as much green space to the units as possible. Rather than having the site crisscrossed with a lot of walking paths, we've sort of coincided those with the vehicular traffic. And then we've used a lot of traffic calming strategies to keep the vehicular traffic slow so that these really do become like a Dutch wooner, if you're familiar with that term, where they're living streets that people will come out and claim and use. It also helps with security and it keeps people in touch with their neighbors a bit more. I want to talk about a couple of technical things while we're here. There's an existing sewer easement that we need to maintain. There's a sewer line that runs up Sixth Street and up and across the tracks to the north. So we have gathered the common area there and the common green of the project in that area to capitalize on the need to be able to maintain that space. And that also creates a focal point. That's one of the areas that we're attempting to save, one of the large existing trees. There's a circle there at the entrance to the project as you come in. We are, I'm sorry, could you move to the next slide? So this is, these got a little dark, but this is kind of the feel that we're looking for, sort of a three-story wall as you're, you know, with your buildings along the side and then the walking path. The next slide, please. These are some of the other precedents that we're looking at to give a lot of variety. We didn't want to have, you know, sort of a cookie cutter approach. We wanted to give each home an individual feel for it. We wanted to give them some character. Next slide, please. This is a bit, oh, sorry, going too fast. It's all right. That's okay.
Spoiler alert.
Yeah, spoiler. We're getting to see the whole show. That's all right, we're good. I've lost the track of, there we go. Okay, so this is a rendering of the project that we're looking at here. We're really focusing on green and sustainable materials. We're looking at durable materials that'll last a long time. So we have some stucco in here, we have some cementitious board siding. We have a change of material as you're coming down to the ground. We're using a lot of the building features as sun shading elements to help. We've oriented the buildings east-west to provide a lot of solar access and also create shade on these streets to be able to create a very pedestrian feel as you're moving through the development. Next, please. This is just a snapshot of the acoustical report. Kathy did mention, and there's one thing I want to put before the board or the commission. I understand that it will unlikely affect our project because it's a general plan issue. But the two blocks that are facing the tracks, we will mitigate the noise for those for the interior environment, no problem. That's going to require some heavy-duty acoustical retreated windows and doors to make sure that the interior environment meets the code-required sound levels. And in the original iteration of the project, one of the conditions of approval was to remove the patios and balconies from those units because those outdoor spaces would exceed the noise level requirement of the general plan of 70 decibels. And what we had asked in working with Kathy over the last year here as we've been putting this application together is that we could have reconsideration for that. That the trains, you know, there's a certain number of trains that run every day. And when they're not running, the noise level is not excessive. And so if people have a balcony, they can go out on it. And if they don't want to, they can come back into their home. And so by taking away the balcony altogether, the train lovers of the world or the people who want plants on their balcony, it's an amenity they don't have. So I've spoken with Kathy and I understand that currently, the way the general plan is worded, that would violate the general plan. So we couldn't make the findings of the staff report. And it, you know, but I put that out there that perhaps that's something you could reconsider because it's, we're going to have to disclose the noise levels to those buyers. They're on the tracks, we're going to disclose the noise levels. If they go into their backyard, whether there's a patio or balcony there or not, they're going to have access to their backyard. And by not providing a balcony and not providing a patio, we're reducing the amenity of the property for these folks. And, you know, there are people who just love trains. There are people who will not be bothered by that. So the rest of the project meets the noise ordinance requirements, the common area, the central green, and the other units will be fine. This is an elevation rendering. And again, I apologize, it's a little darker than I expected. But this gives you an idea of some of the precedents that we're working with and then what we're trying to do with the material changes, the bays, the window sizes, some of the roof element treatments, the different, the ground level. We're looking at having the garage doors that have the semi-translucent panels. So we're having some light and some play of materials and differentiation of scale down at that pedestrian level so that it's an exciting place to walk. It's not, it's not a undefined, you know, parking road. It's going to be having a lot, each of the entries has a little porch area for personalization and a stoop, if you will, to be able to encourage folks to hang out there as well. Next slide, please. These are some of the unit plans. One of the things we've tried to do is come up with a variety of mixes of units. We have a small studio unit. We have a traditional two-car side-by-side garage with sort of a more great-room approach and a little bit of, you know, the bedrooms upstairs and a den. Next slide, please. And then we have some units with tandem parking and an open plan. And we have some with lofts. We're trying to work with a mix of sizes and a mix of layouts to be able to encourage a diverse group of folks to be interested in the property. We've got sizes ranging from the studio of 750 up to 1,500 for the larger units. And again, we're trying to get a mix of people in there with a different incomes, different family, you know, makeup, singles, as well as... different family, you know, makeup, singles, as well as, um, we have some units that have some, um, uh, ground floor, um, spaces with an accessible bathroom, so you could have a mother-in-law unit, that sort of thing. We want to have a, we want to encourage a wide range of, of family types and, and buyers to be interested. Next. Uh, these are some, uh, renderings of an interior, uh, unit. Next, please. Next, please. And then lastly, this is, uh, we are, uh, going to be submitting for Green Point rating, so we are interested in, in focusing on sustainability for the project, from indoor air quality to the outdoor community spaces, durable materials and that sort of thing. Last slide, please. And then I end on this shot, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. And I, um, start to my right, um, Commissioner Strumfels, do you have any questions?
No, this time.
All right, then I'll go over to my left and, all right. And Commissioner Leibig, yes.
Um, thank you, Ms. Struckton, for your presentation. I think I'm the only person who probably sat through the original presentation.
Original, yes.
Which means my time is limited. Um, I, I do remember, I do remember the project, and I'll just say right up front, um, I, I would reconsider the balconies, um, just as a personal, uh, thought. You can always close them. Um, my concern originally with that was actually with the, um, exhaust from the trains. Um, more so than the noise, because the trains get backed up there, sometimes waiting for the bridge to open and close. Um, I, I do have just a question for my own interest. Why was the community building removed?
So that, um, yes, the, the original project, uh, sponsor ran, had in their family business a childcare. They, they, they ran childcare facilities as part of their business, and so they were interested in teaming up with the city to do a childcare facility, and they were talking to the city about using some funds to be able to help if the, they were interested in creating a partnership where the city would help pay for the childcare center, and then they would operate the facility. And in that childcare facility, then, we had some leftover space that we utilized to bid in a small business center and exercise facility that would be able to be used for the residents. So since that time, we do not now have a childcare operator, we do not have someone that would be interested in, in running that and be able to do that piece of it. We've also, our client has reached out to different groups and different childcare operators to see if they would be interested in it. And we don't, the feedback that we received was we don't have critical mass in that area to be able to, to pay for that kind of facility, and it became a budget issue. Um, the, the density of the project wouldn't support it. Moving forward, there may be an opportunity to reconsider in, in later, you know, developments in the neighborhood, um, but to, the community center was really a twenty-five, you know, childcare, you know, twenty-five children, uh, childcare facility with a small business center and exercise facility. And building those on their own is not cost-effective for the, for the project.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think I've got one of my other questions answered. It was the Ingress, I was, I was concerned, or I was, I had a question about the, uh, I think the drive aisle for, that comes off McDowell. Um, I was a little curious about the setup for that, but I think I understand it, uh, now that I'm understanding the map a little bit better. Um, I do think this project has a, a great urban feel. Um, I like that. The, um, I think we're going to need to have solid transportation, uh, in our city to serve a project like this, and, and I know that, that our city is constantly working to improve transportation. Um, one of my concerns, and I'm, um, it's a little odd that I'm going to echo Charlie here, uh, given that he's not here, is, um, parking. But my, my concern, it would be different, um, than I think what you would hear from Charlie, in that I think you, if you allow parking on the street there, you would lose your, your, um, living street feel. And so, so that's my concern with that. So if all cars are limited to being parked in the, in the garage, I'm not, um, I'm not sure. Well, there's a question, is it a one-car, two-car garage?
May I?
Sure.
May I reply? Would you mind putting up slide two, please? There, so, oh, back, there you go. So, um, there, there are some onsite parking areas. We meet the guest requirement, to meet the guest requirement for parking on the site, but the units all have, um, well, almost all of the units have two-car parking in the, in the dwelling with it, in their garage. And then there are a few units that have a single car. Um, and we do meet the parking ordinance requirements, we're not asking for a parking exemption. There are some, most of the drive aisle is not intended to be parked. It's designed, we worked with the fire department originally to meet the fire truck criteria and to make it as narrow as we possibly could, so there is no intent to park all along this, this road. There are a few spaces, if you see sort of at the top of block ten, there's a little bulb out there, and at the end there, kind of, if you can envision where Harriet Lane is, there's a little cutout of parking there at the end of our green belt. There's some onsite parking there. Um, and there's a one little, you know, random spot down at the end, over there at the end of block one. Those are the only parking cars that will be out and exposed. Every other of, of every other car will be housed inside the garage. There will be no space to park a car in that road. So we, we do not intend to have that.
I, I see a generation coming up that is going to appreciate this, for sure. Um, and there, there might be some, um, minor conflicts as your project gets moving before, you know, our, our, say, our streetcar, uh, gets up and going. I know we have a bus system, but I think we need more. Um, so, so you might have some conflicts with parking spilling outside of this development, um, and, and we will have to be comfortable with that or, or not.
I guess my question is that we, if we, we're not asking for a parking exemption, so we're meeting your parking requirement, so I'm not sure I'm following the concern.
I, I will say that in, in current, some current developments, you'll see parking spilling outside of, um, the, the development area. It's one of our concerns.
Okay.
And as, um, these urban developments are, um, coming together, you, sometimes the construction of the homes gets ahead of other parking infrastructures or transportation options.
Nice.
So, so, uh, at this point, we might end up with, um, again, a, possibly a short-term parking, um, conflict, but, um, to keep the urban feel, I would not want to increase parking, uh, in the area either, so.
Okay.
Um, I think that is it, thank you.
May I add one more comment to your, uh, comment about the train?
Mm-hmm.
One of the requirements for those buildings, one and six, that directly face the train, is that they have a ventilation system that will allow the windows to be closed. So in other, um, other dwellings, we could rely on the windows to provide fresh air in the units, and in those buildings, we are not allowed to do that. We need to bring in fresh air into a, through a mechanical system so that the residents are not required to open their windows for fresh air, and that is, it is specifically because of the train, um, to, to mitigate the noise, but it will also mitigate the, the fumes and those kinds of things, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keltner?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. As one of the, um, I know this is going to sound funny, but as one of the junior members of the commission, uh, it's very helpful, so thank you. I assume there would be a homeowners' association to take care of maintenance of the paved and common areas?
That is correct. These are intended as fee simple homes, um, so the, the, each owner will own their dwelling, and there'll be a set of CCNRs that will govern the maintenance and the requirements. There'll be a cross-easement at the party wall to, to maintain those buildings. But then outside of the lot, the, the garden space and the, and the roadways, outside of their lot, that would be maintained by the homeowners' association, yes.
Uh, just to echo the concerns of, uh, Commissioner Leibig, uh, the, uh, development that I live in, uh, has had the predictable arguments about parking, uh, until the cows come home. And I would just like to urge you to, uh, make ex- as explicit as possible, uh, the, um, information to the prospective buyers about the availability, or lack thereof, of, uh, street parking.
Thank you.
It has been a huge dilemma in the, uh, development where I live, so word to the wise.
Thank you, I appreciate that feedback.
Uh, another question about patio and balcony on the track side. Would it not complicate the noise control to have a, a door or window that can be opened facing the track? Uh, does that not make the, uh, sound control more difficult?
First, um, yes, it does. Those are going to be expensive doors and windows. Uh, there's an STC of forty required for the windows. That'll mean it's laminated, you know, laminated, uh, glass with probably an inch of air, something like that. These are going to be expensive, heavy, heavy-duty windows. Um, but, but we would not, um, think of not having operable windows, because it's, it's light and ventilation and air movement, those are too, too many important things. Um, we also have bedrooms that require egress windows, so those, we require operable windows on those sides. Um, the, uh, the issue of the, the balcony is really more one of choice, in my opinion. You know, if we fully have to disclose the noise of the train, we, we will be putting the door in anyway. What happens in order for the elevations, we don't want to basically put a, you know, wall off that or make it a fixed, you know, situation. What we'll be doing is, instead of an actual balcony that you'd walk out on, we'll have a, a French balcony, you know, where basically the railing sucks back up against the building, so you can still open the door, you can still look out, you can still stand there and look at the train, but you can shut the door. So it's not technically a balcony, uh, it doesn't have a space that you can go sit out on, but it still allows somebody to open up and look out, look outside, holler down to their kid playing in the backyard, that kind of thing, so.
And one final question, thank you. You mentioned the availability of studios. Wasn't clear to me whether those are on one level or two. Uh, are there any units that have no stairs at all?
No. All of the units are townhomes, but, uh, the California Building Code requires that even in a multi-level unit, that we have at least ten percent of the units that meet some accessibility requirements. And so for ten percent of the units, we do have a ground-level, uh, room that could be used as a bedroom, and then there's an accessible bath at that level. The studio I was mentioning is actually a loft studio, and it's, uh, it's up at the northern portion, just below the word site, and there are a couple of units up there, and they're basically, um, they are also accessible on the ground level, and they have a kitchen, a living area, uh, and a bathroom on the ground level, and then there's stairs that go up to a sleeping loft. So we have a mix of accessibility, but no, we have no single-story units on the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Keltner.
Um, I actually don't have any questions, but I did want to thank you for the, the, uh, presentation. It was, it was very informative, and, and the project looks beautiful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Rastin?
Well, thank you all very much for dusting off your plans and taking a chance on West Sack. Seriously, that's, I, I recognize it, that's probably a significant, you know, decision to make, just as the, the market is turning around, and I'm, um, I will share with you that the product that you're looking to provide, from kind of my unofficial market study of both sides of our river, um, I think you're going to do fairly well with this size, um, location and the type of amenities you're providing. So again, thank you for putting something very innovative, progressive, and infill in our, in our community. Um, so I actually had a, a couple of questions, um, a couple about the project, and then I, I actually did want to know a little bit more about, about, uh, your architect and development team. Um, so in regards to the question about the, um, uh, the, the balconies, you mentioned, you know, a reconsideration of our general pan, plan, and we are going through an update. We've actually already been, been review, reviewing and revising it, but I'm wondering functionally if staff could mention, have you, I, I don't know if you've had a chance to think this through, or what would that look like? Are we talking about a variance, or I don't?
No, you, you couldn't do a variance to the general plan.
Okay.
So those noise, those noise thresholds for interior and exterior exposure are thresholds that need to be complied with, you know, one way or the other. And so then the seventy decibels, that's on a twenty-four-hour weighted average.
Mm-hmm.
And so, yes, you know, the noise levels do fluctuate throughout the days, that's where, you know, the weighted average, you know, comes in. So to find general plan and Washington-specific plan consistency for the project, uh, you know, would need to meet those noise thresholds, both interior and exterior.
So then my question is, um, do we need to address this as a planning commission? Or is this something that could be discussed at an, at a staff level moving forward? I, I, I'm trying to understand how, you know, how we can move forward. Is this really threshold, this, this is not something that can be modified or addressed?
Not without amending the general plan and doing some very significant environmental review on that.
Okay.
So this is something we'll need to work on with the applicant in the intervening time, but when we do return, for us to be able to recommend approval to project, we do have to show general plan and specific plan consistency, and so this will be, that'll be one of the topics.
So if we approve, if, if we, um, went with staff recommendation as approved, there would be no, no balconies on the Union Pacific Railroad side of the building, is that correct?
When I heard the term balcony, I was envisioning a much more, you know, usable, you know, functional outdoor space, you know, for a balcony, not, not, rather than what I, is what I call the Juliette balcony, which you could sort of stand there and poke your head out, but you really can't step out on it. And I think it's, it's really debatable that that offers a lot of what I'll call recreational utility. Um, but the backyards is, you know, it's going to be a different, you know, different story entirely. Uh, so what we have done in the Bridge District, this is an issue there as well, is that with balconies on some of those projects, uh, they provide, um, additional recreational space, you know, within the project, that's sort of the equivalent where that the noise thresholds are complied with. And so we've been able to let the balconies on some of those apartment buildings, you know, go, because there's additional space, you know, within the project. So, uh, we may need to evaluate this project from that standpoint as well, as we do need to get the noise thresholds, and this is noise, and when we're talking about noise, this is not just nuisance noise, this is getting to be hazardous levels of noise exposure.
May I make one comment here? So I want to be clear, we're not asking to hold up the project, we're willing to pull the balconies off, it's no problem. What we're, what we're saying is it would be nice to have a way to reconsider this going forward for other projects. And David, to your comment, we do have a, a significant amount of outdoor common space that does meet the noise requirements, so we are in compliance with the, the area per unit, you know, requirements and those kinds of things. So we do not need the balconies on the backside. They were originally intended to actually be spaces that you would walk out on, and what we will be doing is basically just, there will be no balcony now, the railing will be tied up against the window. It's a, it's effectively a window now, so. That we'll be in compliance with the original staff report recommendations. We don't want to slow the project down.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm trying to figure.
Yes.
I think you, I think you want your approvals tonight, so I'm just getting clarification on that. Um, so I'll just share with you, I, I worked on a project on the other side of the river. Now, it was adjacent to light rail, it was not adjacent to industrial heavy rail, which I think is very, very different. However, as far as noise goes, um, I, I think that it was, you know, fairly comparable, and it took fourteen variances to do this particular project, but we managed to have balconies on the side that faced the, the train. So I'm hoping that, you know, we, we can take this into consideration. I, again, I do agree that heavy rail, industrial is very different, but, um, I appreciate the, the feedback on that. Um, so Washington-specific plan, you know, we've been, our city's really been working on this and been committed to it. Um, we faced a significant setback with a downturn in the economy, um, so I would actually love to hear from, from, it may not be you, maybe your development team, a little bit about some of your rationale, why, why you kind of came back, dusted off your plans, because I think it would inform me as a community member and as a planning commissioner on projects coming forward. Um, kind of market influences or just things that, you know, that we should keep in mind as we have new, hopefully many new projects coming before us. So it could just be, you know, a couple sentences, like.
Do you want to speak to that, or do you want to?
Oh, sure, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, it could be informal of something that's passed along to staff, it's just something that I'm, I'm curious about, because I would love, I will let you know, I'd love to continue to see this type of development in this particular neighborhood, so, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And, um, and since this is a public workshop, um, and yet we will have a future public hearing, um, that will be scheduled for this particular project, where I think we will take action, um, on, and, uh, look forward to, um, feedback, um, from the staff based on the comments and, um, information that the commissioners are asking for, um, from this public workshop. And I also want to thank you for, um, what you have done. The plans look, um, really nice, I like all the walking paths and, um, and, uh, you know, it's, uh, you know, sometimes having all those stairs myself, as I'm looking at my future age and trying to find maybe a, a one-story, I look at this and I'm like, oh, you know, it's probably not something I would choose, but. it's probably not something I would choose, but younger people and younger working people in the proximity, um, you know, access to the city, and, you know, I think that's going to be a huge benefit for them. I think that, um, you know, driving around and, and seeing how beautiful the area is, is growing to be, I, um, appreciate that you're a part of the community now and, and building that area. And, um, I also, um, you know, wanted to, uh, emphasize on Commissioner Lebig's, um, you know, concern about the parking, um, looking at my garage and how much I use for storage.
Right.
And, um, you know, that they're not, it's not a hu- it's not a big garage, and I anticipate that, you know, people that come in and they have small space, they want to maximize that living space and use that as storage, and, um, their cars may spill out into the street, and, and I observed that there's really not a whole lot of parking out on the street. Um, and maybe to take a look at either, um, you know, as we're looking at our, um, streetcar in the future, but, um, to minimize the parking in the street, to discourage that as people are, um, researching whether this is going to be their home, and, um, you know, getting the foresight of, you may need a parking permit, you may need, uh, you may, this may not be for you, so
Right.
You know, try to encourage those that are going to be using, um, you know, the space in the home so that they can use other modes of transportation. Um, and that's something that, um, you know, Commissioner Kelcher was, you know, saying with the foresight, um, as you take a look at, uh, planning this and shopping this out there in the future, which we look forward to seeing.
Great, well, thank you, and if I may be so rude to take up two more minutes of your time.
Sure, absolutely.
I, I thought of one other thing to mention here in front of you that we were doing this time around that was slightly different than last time, and we need to work out the details with, with staff and, and, uh, public works through, and engineering through the end, but you'll notice on the bottom of the project, uh, there along E Street, we have an odd sort of shaped sidewalk that bulbs out. The intent there is to, to use a decomposed granite if possible to save those trees on the corner. There's some lovely, um, trees there along, along E Street, and we're trying to work with the arborist and the landscape architect to be able to save those, and based on where the roots are and everything, it would be lovely to be able to, that's a city sidewalk, so to have a little bit of fun there with that. So, um, it, it's not something that we're getting into the detail at this hearing level, but it's something we're trying to do to basically give a little bit more character and, and save some of those mature trees as much as possible. Um, and the last comment I'll make on the stairs, so this is another, this is an anecdote along your line earlier, but we had a client that requi- that had a five-story, uh, home in San Francisco, and she was seventy years old and she had hip surgery, so they hired us to design and put in an elevator.
Oh.
And in San Francisco, it needed a variance, and it took a while to get that done, and by the time that was done, her surgery was done, and she was rehabilitating on her five stories of stairs, and that was it. Her doctor said, "How did you do it? You recovered faster from that surgery than anybody I've ever seen." And it was because of the stairs, because basically her exercise going up and down kept her young and was able to re- recover from a hip surgery. So, um, it's something, you know, it, it's, I appreciate that it is a, is a choice, but it is also something as we, with the cars.
Good exercise.
We'll get, we'll get people used to this slowly, and, and being able to walk in, the more amenities, the area's growing, and as you're
All it is.
You know, moving forward with your plans, it's so exciting, so we're, we're very happy to be a part of it and look forward to working with you on the project. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That's it? Thank you.
And we'll continue. I don't have any request for public comment from anybody, and, um, we have provided quite a few comments, and, uh, Steph, did you have any additional?
I just want to thank the commissioner for this, it's been some good input tonight, and, um, hopefully we can come back at, hopefully, when your meetings, um, next month.
All right, next month? Looking forward to it, thank you.
I'm sorry, didn't we already push something to next, the next meeting, which was late February?
Yeah, well, I mean, uh, this, I was referring to this project, we can anticipate coming back in March.
Okay. March, okay.
We have a couple other items on the, on the way for the next couple of meetings.
Okay. And any, um, our next item on the agenda is under general administration, uh, is there any informal discussion by anybody at this point?
Uh, I would like to welcome back, um, Commissioner Temper, who is a mother of two now, so congratulations on your new baby.
Congratulations, thank you.
Quick to go, yeah.
Sorry, I caught you off.
It's all those stairs, five stories.
It is the stairs. Two-story on. And any other comments? No? All right, and at this point, we adjourn.